Counselor Baker. Counselor Campbell, here.
Counselor Siomo.
Present.
Counselor Edwards.
Present.
Counselor Asabi George.
Present.
Counselor Flaherty.
Yes.
Counselor Flynn.
Yes.
Counselor Garrison.
Yes.
Counselor Janey.
Present.
Counselor McCarthy.
Yes.
Counselor O'Malley.
Present.
Counselor Wu. And Counselor Zachem. Madam President, we have a quorum.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. At this time, I've been informed by the clerk that we have a quorum. I would like all guests to please rise, including my colleagues. Our lovely clerk will take us through an invocation today. And then after that, I ask that everyone remain standing as she leads us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Good afternoon. Oh God of our being and becoming, we enter a new year in the spirit of reflection. We look back to decisions made and issues we have dealt with, and we look forward to the issues of the coming year. The decisions that we have yet to make. We ask for your wisdom, we ask for your strength in helping us to become better servants of your love. We take this time at the turning of the year to thank you for the gifts of another year amidst the hustle and bustle of our beautiful city. We give thanks for the gifts of life and for the abundance that is ours. May we always rejoice at the splendor of creation. On this day, we acknowledge issues that generate a lot of feelings. May you grant our public servants wisdom to make the decisions that will bring the greatest good to the greatest number of people. We ask your blessing and guidance in this new year. We pray in many names by which you are known. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic of which we stand, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. At this time, Counselor Edwards has a special presentation.
Good afternoon, colleagues. This is a special presentation to really acknowledge the efforts of the community to ensure that despite DC's unwillingness to work, Boston keeps moving and Boston shines even brighter. We're now on the 26th day of the federal government shutdown, and thousands of federal government workers remain furloughed or working without pay. And that includes hundreds of people who live here in Boston. The Bunker Hill Monument in Charlestown is under the jurisdiction of the National Park Service. So this shutdown actually comes at the closure of the monument to tourists, but that hasn't necessarily kept them out, and it hasn't stopped a lot of folks from coming there and also trashing the place. So we're understaffed, and people aren't cleaning it up regularly for the National Park Services. But we're lucky to have amazing volunteers in the community of Charlestown. Amazing people who work for the city of Boston, specifically the Boston Public Works Department, who every few days have now gone out to the monument to clean it up, to make sure that we take care of our community, despite whether DC chooses to work or not. And I wanted to personally thank them and say out their names and the organizations that they represent. We have members from the Charlestown Dogs. Specifically, we also have Chris Lovell, Arthur Kolpak, and Pippa Nava here today. So I wanted to give them a round of applause for coming out there. They've gone out of their way to clean the trash, to utilize wastebags. They've installed and post signs encouraging visitors to use them as well. They basically taken on leadership where DC has failed. And I'm just so proud of them as their district city counselor, but also wanted to acknowledge them publicly for their work. So thank you so much. I have some certificates as well to present to them for making sure that we shine our brightest in Boston. Thank you. So if you want to come up for a photo, come on up.
Fantastic. Thank you. Sure. I think our work was in the common sense category.
Thank you, guys.
[inaudible]
Okay.
Come on up.
I see us all the time.
I'll step over here. I'll stand right here.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
You, too.
Thank you.
I remember Christine's.
Yeah, I can give her something.
Thank you very much.
It's great to have wonderful people like you helping us out.
Thank you.
Oh, awesome.
Thank you.
No, thank you.
Thank you.
That's a good question.
Thank you.
Perfect.
Thank you, Counselor Edwards. Moving on to approval of the minutes. If there are no corrections to be made, the minutes of the last council meeting will stand approved. Seeing and hearing no objection, the minutes are so approved. Moving on to communications from His Honor, the Mayor.
Docket number 0173, message and order approving home rule petition to the General Court entitled, "Petitions for a Special Law Regarding a Fire Cadet Program for the City of Boston Fire Department."
Docket 1073 will be assigned to the Committee on Public Safety and Criminal Justice.
Docket number 0174.
I'm sorry, Madam Clerk. Sorry. That's wrong. So docket 10173, at this time, actually asked that that be removed from the Committee on Public Safety and Criminal Justice and actually properly assigned to the Committee on Government Operations.
Thank you, Madam President. Docket number 0174, message and order authorizing the city of Boston to accept and expend a grant from the Boston Planning and Development Agency in an amount not to exceed $1,502,505 for the cost related to the design and construction of the Harrison Ave Complete Street Corridor Project.
Docket 0174 will be assigned to the Committee on Planning, Development, and Transportation.
Docket number 0175, message and order authorizing the city of Boston to submit to the Massachusetts School Building Authority the statement of interest dated January 14, 2019, for the English High School, Jamaica Plain, McKinley K-12, Boston, the Curly K-8, Mary Lyon 9-12, Brighton, the Josiah Quincy Elementary School, and the Dudley Street Neighborhood Charter School in Roxbury.
Docket 0175 will be assigned to the Committee on Planning, Development, and Transportation.
Docket number 0175, message and order authorizing the city of Boston to submit to the Massachusetts School Building Authority the statement of interest dated January 14, 2019, for the English High School, Jamaica Plain, McKinley K-12, Boston, the Curly K-8, Mary Lyon 9-12, Brighton, the Josiah Quincy Elementary School, and the Dudley Street Neighborhood Charter School in Roxbury.
Docket 0175 will be assigned to the Committee on Ways and Means.
Madam President, would you like me to read docket 0176 and 0177 together?
That'd be great. Thank you.
Thank you. Docket number 0176, message and order for the confirmation of the reappointment of Maisha Minter Jordan as a member of the Boston Public Health Commission Board of Health for a term expiring January 15, 2020. Docket number 0177, message and order for the confirmation of the appointment of Jacqueline Rivers as a member of the Boston Public Health Commission's Board of Health with term expiring January 15, 2022.
Counsel O'Malley?
I'm s-
This is docket 0176 and 0177.
Could we, I request a brief recess, please, Madam President.
Thank you. From a brief recess, for docket 0176 and 0177, they will be placed in the Committee on Healthy Women, Families, and Communities.
Thank you.
Moving on to reports of public officers and others.
Madam President, would you like me to read 0178 through 0181?
That would be great. Thank you, Madam Clerk.
0178, notices received from the City Clerk in accordance with Chapter 6 of the ordinances of 1979 regarding action taken by the mayor on papers acted upon by the city council at its, excuse me, at its meeting of December 5, 2018. Docket number 0179, notices received from the City Clerk in accordance with Chapter 6 of the ordinances of 1979 regarding action taken by the mayor on papers acted upon by the city council at its meeting of December 12, 2018. Docket number 0180, communication was received from Congresswoman A. Anna Pressley in support of Counsel Garrison. Docket number 0181, communication was received from President Campbell of the filing of a report on diversity in Boston's public safety agencies, where we are now and how we can improve.
Dockets 0178 through 0181 will be placed on file. Moving on to motions, orders, and resolutions.
Docket number 0182, Counselors Janey and Campbell offered the following order for hearing on admission to Boston's exam schools.
Counselor Janey, you have the floor.
Thank you so much, Madam President, and also thank you for joining me in this refile. So folks, remember, we filed this hearing order last year. Very important issues still when it comes to dealing with equity and diversity and inclusion in our schools. This issue really came to light in recent years when, on Martin Luther King Day a few years back, Maggie and Kylie, two very courageous students, launched what they were calling Black at BLS. These issues are still prevalent, the issues that they experienced, that they shared. We saw in the report, the Rappaport Institute at Harvard made some suggestions about how we could deal with the admissions policy to make it more inclusive. They had suggested using MCAS. There were lots of other suggestions on the table, and this hearing order will simply, or the hearing itself, will let us explore ways to look at admissions and hopefully make sure that all of our students in our city can benefit from an education at any one of our exam schools, particularly Latin schools. So again, thank you for your partnership. I look forward to engaging my colleagues, parents, students, teachers, everyone in this conversation as we move forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Janey, and look forward to continuing the work on this. Anyone looking to speak or add their name? Madam Clerk, if you could add Counsel Edwards, Counsel Wu. At this time, docket 0182 will be assigned to the Committee on Education.
Docket number 0183, Counselors Janey and Asabi George offered the following order for hearing on sober housing in the city of Boston.
Counsel Janey, you have the floor.
Thank you so much, Madam President, and I want to thank Counselor Asabi George for co-sponsoring this refile with me and for her leadership on issues regarding recovery. You know, this is still a very, unfortunately, we still struggle with this issue in our community in terms of addiction. We certainly need to make sure that as individuals are seeking recovery, that they're able to get into treatment. Sober homes do have a role to play in this, but what we know from some incidents last year and from the past is that they tend to be clustered in certain neighborhoods and not others. So the question is really, how do we have a, or at least the ones that are registered? Because that's the other issue. We don't know. There is no real engagement of community. These are just popping up wherever they want to. Those who voluntarily register are clustered in certain communities. I mean, I think it's just worth having a conversation to understand how residents can be engaged in the process, how we can make sure that they're not being pitted against those who actually need recovery, and that some of the bad players who exist are not allowed to prey on people with addiction. So again, I look forward to engaging all of you in this important conversation.
Thank you, Counsel Janey. Anyone else looking to speak on this matter or add their name? Sorry. Madam Clerk, if you could add Counsel Edwards, Counsel Garrison, anyone else, as well as the Chair. Docket 0183 will be assigned to the Committee on Homelessness, Mental Health, and Recovery.
Docket number 0184, Counselors Edwards and Zachem offered the following, an ordinance reauthorizing condominium conversion protections in the city of Boston.
Counsel Edwards, you have the floor.
Thank you very much. This is really following up a conversation that we've heard many, many times about assuring that when people are flipping and when they're creating condos, that our tenants aren't displaced and that we are not becoming a lesser city because of it. This ordinance has been around for, since, I believe, 1999, and the ability to renew it and to again express our commitment to assuring that we're protecting tenants while we're developing is something that I think we should take advantage of as much as possible. This condo conversion ordinance is actually going to sunset in December of this year. And so this is really just a call to renew our commitment to renewing that ordinance that we've done for many, many years so far. I want to thank the leadership of my colleague and his partnership in this ordinance, and also just in general, your breadth of knowledge and having been the Chair of Housing beforehand and really working with me a great deal. So I want to thank you, Josh, or Counsel Zachem, for all of that. But it's a really simple ask. It's asking us to renew our commitment and to renew our protections for tenants with this wonderful ordinance. It provides notice periods, it provides right of first refusal, it provides relocation assistance for our elderly and some of our most vulnerable folks, limitations on rent increases, and also certain just cause evictions for tenants who are, to assure that they're just not evicted for no reason. So I suggest the body continue to have those protections and recommit to assuring that we are a livable city.
Thank you, Counsel Edwards. Counsel Zachem, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. I want to thank the Chair of the Committee on Housing and Community Development for her leadership and partnership on this. You know, 2014, this body reauthorized, or rather, re-opted in to this state law. It's really one of the few state laws we have right now in the Commonwealth that are directly addressing some of the housing pressures and the pressures on the market here in the city of Boston, particularly around displacement, protecting long-term residents when their homes are converted to condominiums or co-ops, as our good colleague already mentioned, some of those protections. One thing we did that was very important five years ago when we reauthorized this was we expanded the amount of money that the converters or the owners were required to pay to help folks relocate, particularly for our seniors, for disabled tenants. It's incredibly important. It's something that is easy for us to do here in the city council with the partnership of the Walsh administration, and it's something that is at a minimum of what we need to be doing to help address these issues in the city of Boston. And I also, I don't want to go on and on, but one important aspect of this law is making sure people in our communities know about it. There are so many folks who could, who would fall under these protections, not enough, but there are a lot of people in the city of Boston, tenants, residents, our constituents, who are unaware of their rights under this statute. So it's something that we need to continue to work with DND, with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services, and all of us when we're out in our communities to make sure the folks know about these protections, because these are. These are in state law. This is not us sending another home rule petition up there and trying to fight it on Beacon Hill. This is it. We opt in. This is the law of the land. So I urge a swift passage of this to make sure it does not expire at the end of the year. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Counsel Zachem. Counsel Janey, you have the floor.
So I think my colleagues covered it all. Certainly, please add my name, and I look forward to having the conversation.
Thank you, Counsel Janey. Counsel Flynn, you have, I'm sorry, Counsel Flaherty, you have the floor.
Please add my name, Madam President.
Madam Clerk, if you could add Counsel Janey, Counsel Flaherty, Counsel Siomo, Counsel Asabi George, Counsel Flynn, Counsel Garrison, Counsel O'Malley, Counsel Wu, as well as the Chair. Docket 0184 will be assigned to the Committee on Government Operations.
Docket number 0185, Counselors O'Malley and Wu offered the following order for hearing on the feasibility of requiring all new municipal buildings to comply with net zero carbon requirements in Boston.
Counsel O'Malley, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. I'm delighted to partner with my colleague and friend, the Outlarge Counselor from Rosendale, on this initiative. This is a refile, but really, it's the result of an incredible process that I was proud to partner with each and every one of you over the last year plus, as we talk about net zero carbon and how we can have a profound impact, not only on climate change, but greenhouse gas emissions, and making Boston the greenest city in the country. Net zero carbon utilizes energy that is supplied or offset by 100% renewable sources and thus does not add to greenhouse gas emissions. That is the elevator pitch for what we're talking about by net zero carbon. Now, buildings in Boston account for a majority. More than 50% of all greenhouse gas emissions come from buildings. So by getting to net zero carbon, we are going to have a profound impact on lowering those emissions and having a positive impact as it relates to storms, as it relates to resiliency, as it relates to the changing man-made climate change and the result that it's had in the city. Last night at the mayor's state of the city, the mayor again recommitted to having Boston be carbon-free by 2050. It was surprising to me and perhaps to some of you to learn that we are closer now to 2050 than we are to 1987. It is 31 years away from 2050, and we have a tremendous amount of work to do. So one thing that we can do right off the bat, as we talk about new municipal buildings, as we talk about new schools, new libraries, new police stations, new buildings, by mandating that they are net zero carbon, we can not only walk the walk, but talk, we can only talk the talk, but walk the walk as well. So I'm delighted to partner again with the Outlarge Counsel from Rosendale. I know she's done some great work in this space as it relates not only to city municipal buildings, but also city land that may be sold off. So there's a real opportunity here to have a profound impact and look forward to having a hearing and invite all of you to, again, continue your support of these great efforts. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel O'Malley. Counsel Wu, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. I just rise to thank the lead sponsor on this for his work over the entire last year, convening numerous sessions in his usual style, bringing everyone to the table, representing all different viewpoints. I am eager to push this and hope to get, to see this get done this year. Just echoing Counsel O'Malley's comments, we, I'm going to keep banging the drum, but we, there's really, in some ways, no time left to be doing everything we can be doing around climate change. Forget 2050. The UN has said emphatically that 2030 is the deadline for the entire planet and the world to get our act together. If we do not have substantial changes in place by 2030, it will be too late to reverse or even live in a sustainable way on the planet. Since that report came out over the summer, subsequent reports have not only confirmed that, but have actually said that report was more lax than the latest numbers. So every bit of data and research that is coming out is adding to the urgency and saying we, at all levels, you know, we're doing what we can, looking at 2020 and thinking about new leadership in the country, but we have our platform here to do everything we can do. This is really the least that we could and should be doing in terms of requiring immediately that all city buildings satisfy the standard and doing what we can to make sure that we're working with our colleagues at the state to push that across every sector, not just public sector and municipal buildings. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Wu. Anyone else looking to speak on this matter, add their name? Madam Clerk, if you could add Counsel Siomo, Counsel Edwards, Counsel Asabi George, Counsel Flaherty, Counsel Flynn, Counsel Janey, Counsel Zachem, as well as the Chair. Docket 0185 will be assigned to the Committee on Environment, Sustainability, and Parks.
Docket number 0186, Counselors O'Malley and Baker offered the following order regarding a text amendment for Boston zoning code for gross-floor area.
Counsel O'Malley, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. Again, I rise to thank my colleague and partner on this, and Abstentia, the great district counsel from Dorchester, for his leadership. I know he's been a willing partner, as all of you have been, as we talk about net zero carbon. This is another refile, but it really gets to the heart, I think, of something that's a little innovative as we talk about incentivizing developers to build green, to build energy efficiently. And it really comes down to the zoning code. As it stands right now, we talk about floor area ratio, or FAR, that's currently measured by the exterior faces of the wall. This would redefine that to measure from the interior of the wall, provided that it was used for insulation, net zero carbon. A thicker wall with more insulation makes for a more energy-efficient building, lower greenhouse gas emissions. As I often say, every fiscal conservative ought to be an environmentalist as well, because you're paying less in utility costs no matter what you use, but a building envelope that has more insulation acts like a thermos, and energy savings are increased. So this is something that came out of our conversations, as we talked about net zero carbon, that was really the trifecta. Environmentalists thought it was great. Developers thought it was great. The building trades thought it was great. This is something that really can have a profound impact. It will take a zoning code amendment change, which is something that we, not only in our power, but is our responsibility, can really play a role. And so I think that this is something that we can see some tangible results in a very short order and look forward to seeing action taken. So I appreciate, appreciate that, Madam President.
Thank you, Counsel O'Malley. Anyone else looking to speak on this matter, add their name? Madam Clerk, if you could add Counsel Siomo, Counsel Edwards, Counsel Asabi George, Counsel Flaherty, Counsel Flynn, Counsel Janey, Counsel Wu, Counsel Zachem, as well as the Chair. Docket 0186 will be assigned to the Committee on Planning, Development, and Transportation.
Docket number 0187, Counselors Edwards and Janey offered the following home rule petition for a special law regarding an act authorizing the city of Boston to establish an investor and commercial properties transfer fee.
Counsel Edwards, you have the floor.
Thank you very much, Madam President. I think it's been almost a year to the day that I joined this body and made my main speech stated, quite frankly, that speculation is something that we cannot sustain in Boston, and also that we cannot build our way out of this housing crisis that we find ourselves in, that I am so proud today to stand with my colleague, Kim Janey, and also colleagues at the State House, Representative Connally and Senator Boncorie, in saying, we need to do more, and the way to do that is to hit at the heart of the problem and to stop speculation. We need to make sure that as a city, we say that we are not for sale and that our Boston housing market is truly for families, the middle class, and folks trying to assure that they can live and work here. This is not the new stock market, which is what it's become. It's become a place where folks can own, prevent people from occupying, and make as much money as possible by simply just having a piece of the property. That's a problem, because we have displacement. We have people looking to live here. We have people looking to be able to stay in the city of Boston. This great city of Boston has amazing opportunities. Those opportunities I have been able to take advantage of and become a homeowner. And I look at people my generation, friends and younger, who will never see that happen in their minds. It's depressing sometimes. But I believe that, and based off the words of our administration, of our mayor last night, that not only can we do this, but we can lead the nation in the conversation about how to stop speculation, how to generate revenue, and how to make sure that when you come to Boston to own property, you're really owning a part of our future and building community, not just buildings. I'm excited to work with the mayor, and I'm excited to work my colleagues here to make sure that this transfer fee is something that we pass out of this body with full support and that we get it to the State House with a movement that I feel is building every single day. In Cambridge, Somerville, Newton, and other cities around, we're saying that their housing markets are also not for sale. They want people coming there to live. This is a movement that's only going to get louder and stronger, because at the end of the day, we do need the revenue to build affordable housing. While we have very low property tax rates, and that's something I fully support, we do need more money. Our IDP has produced over $100 million. Our linkage has produced about $40 million. If this transfer fee were to pass at this rate of 6%, we're talking hundreds of millions of dollars. And we're bringing speculators to the table, saying, you need- And we're bringing speculators to the table, saying, you need to pay for what you're breaking. You need to stop breaking our housing market and breaking our backs and inflating the housing prices to make sure that people can't become homeowners. That, I'm happy to say, I'm going to do my best to stop. And when it comes to the flippers and folks who are coming into our neighborhoods and just turning over properties, I'm not talking about the average person who has a property, who's bought it, who lived in it, and one day wants to make money off of that. That's why owner occupants are exempt. That's why families' transfers are exempt, because building wealth is important. It's necessary. We're talking about people who are coming here only to make money and as much as possible, regardless of the pain that they make. I've seen it in East Boston. We had flippers come in, a young man in his 20s, flipped about 70 units. And in order to make that money, he evicted as many people as possible, and two of the walls fell down in the buildings that he flipped, because he was moving so fast. His job was to make money, and he would throw on some paint on an empty building and then quickly sell it. We ended up displacing tenants in other buildings that were actually connected to those buildings, who he didn't buy, because his work was so shoddy. The kind of aggressive flipping and the kind of speculation in our communities is something we cannot sustain. We are in a boom economically. We have money coming here. That is a good thing. This will not stop that. This will assure that speculators are paying into the pot, just like construction and developers are doing right now. They pay into the pot through linkage fees. They pay into the pot through IDP fees and regulations. Well, speculators aren't doing that, and this is inviting them or demanding of them to do it. I look forward to making sure that our city is no longer part of the new stock market. I look forward to telling speculators, you are not welcome here anymore. And I look forward to our leadership from our mayor to make sure that he is part of the same message in generating those revenues, to go to wonderful city programs that I was blessed to be a part of when I worked for this administration. Programs such as Down Payment Assistance and the Boston Home Buyers, programs such as the Acquisition Opportunity Program, allowing nonprofits to buy up triple-deckers. These are wonderful programs the city already has. I am hopeful that we will only generate more funds to make sure those programs continue to grow. A wonderful example of the Acquisition Opportunity Program is the fact that it -- the goal of the administration is to have 1,000 new units under that program. In order to do that, we need to acquire 83 units a year by 2030. That's cost us $7 million, but that would be 1,000 new rental units that are permanently affordable by buying at the market rate. It's a program that works. It's a program that needs money. The transfer fee will help raise that money. So let's protect Boston. Let's make sure our housing is for folks to live here. And I look forward for your leadership, your guidance, your mentorship. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Counselor Edwards. Counselor Janey, you have the floor.
Thank you so much, Madam President. Also want to thank Counselor Edwards, not only for her partnership on this piece of legislation, but for her leadership. You've been a fierce advocate around housing and making sure that Boston stays affordable for residents who currently live here. You know, this council and the mayor has already taken steps to address the housing crisis. For example, last year, we passed the short-term rental, but we need to do much more. We need to take bold action. We need to send a clear message that Boston is not for sale. We need to make sure that Boston continues to be a city for families, for workers, for people who want to come and invest in our communities. And this legislation will help us slow things down and creates revenue to invest in affordable housing for residents who are here. Both Counselor Edwards and I held hearings last year on these issues. At her hearing, at her working session, at my hearing on gentrification in Roxbury, we heard clearly, a clear message from residents, that they want to see the luxury real estate market slow down and more investment in affordable housing. We heard how the high costs are causing residents, many who are looking to buy and make their first purchase and invest in a community, raise their families, build and create communities with their neighbors. It's causing them to look outside of the city, because they can't afford to do it here. So we owe it to our constituents, to the residents of this city. This is about fairness. It's about equity. It's about justice. It's really about closing the wealth gap. People can't buy a home if the market is overrun by people who are flipping properties. It really puts it out of reach for regular people. This housing crisis is impacting public health, the quality of life, and we need to do much more. I'm proud, again, to partner. This particular legislation would discourage the practice of flipping by creating this fee within the 24 -- if you resell a property within 24 months, it also will generate hundreds of millions of dollars that we can invest and help people who want to buy their first home, which is so important. So I look forward to really partnering with all of you. This is a very important piece of legislation. We've got to be bold here. We've got to take action and send that message to folks who want to use our city and use this hot market as a way to lock people out. So again, I appreciate you. I thank you for your partnership and for your leadership. I look forward to engaging all of my colleagues on the council in this, as well as my colleagues at the state and in the mayor's office. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Counselor Janey. Counselor Wu, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. I rise to commend the makers on putting forward this proposal and continuing to push our attention, our resources, and solutions for the crisis of affordability and displacement. You know, we've certainly -- this is -- this has been a -- this proposal has gotten a lot of attention, and my office has gotten outreach and heard from folks. What I love about the language here is that you have put forward a bold solution that is not just talk and distills down what you heard over the course of last year with hearing after hearing after hearing. This is a real set of actions that we could take, and it sets the standard for flexibility at the city level. You ask for a certain -- the ability to take a certain level of action, so that we always have that decision where it belongs here in city government, to adjust based on how the economy is doing, to take into account in real-time the feedback from residents. So I know that there will be much conversation on this, but the important point is that this is a body that is working to do and not just talk. And this whole -- this is one of a whole suite of proposals that we all, and particularly these two sponsors, are putting forward. So I look forward to seeing many of these come to fruition and hope that our partners at the State House will continue to recognize that the city is best equipped to make decisions on what the level of fees or taxes or adjustments should be, and that by asking for that full 25% and giving us the ability to make decisions and determinations, we continue to be able to respond as quickly as possible to the needs of our residents. Thank you.
Please add your name. Madam Clerk, please add Counselor Wu's name. Counselor Siomo, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. I rise to ask that my name be added, and look forward to this conversation. One thing that popped into my head is during our negotiations with Harvard during their last master plan, we implemented a program in partnership with the local Austin-Brighton CDC, and they purchased properties with the sole purpose of reselling them to owner occupants. So anything that we do, I want to just make sure that we're mindful of programs such as this, that actually are positive for my community. We have such a low owner occupancy rate. But also, we need to realize that taxes and fees impact behavior. And I don't disagree that we can't necessarily build our way out, but certainly, building is a major part of that solution. And just want to be mindful about how fees, taxes, impact developers' behaviors, buyers' behaviors, and such, but look forward to that conversation.
Thank you, Counselor Siomo. I'm assuming you want to add your name? Madam Clerk, if you could add Counselor Siomo, Counselor Sabi George, Counselor Flaherty, Counselor Flynn, Counselor Garrison, Counselor O'Malley, Counselor Zachem, as well as the Chair. Docket 0187 will be assigned to government -- the Committee on Government Operations.
Docket number 0188, Counselors Edwards and Campbell offered the following, an ordinance relative to the establishment of an independent commission on equal opportunity and the elimination of systematic bias in the workplace.
I would like to suspend the Rule 12 and add Counselor Zachem as an original cosponsor before I start.
Any objections? Seeing and hearing none, please add the additional sponsor.
Thank you very much. So we find ourselves in a wonderful, I think, opportunity or time for opportunity to really reflect on not only the history of Boston, but how far we're going to go. The state of the city was a wonderful statement, an aggressive, bold statement, a progressive statement from the mayor of our commitment to our diversity and assuring that we won't back down despite bullying from DC and other entities, or folks who just aren't welcoming to immigrants, or to our gay and lesbian community, or trans community. And I was inspired by those words. Honestly, I cannot be more thankful to see that kind of leadership come from the mayor. So I want to take that leadership and that energy behind those words and say, we can go further together. This is not an attempt to take away power from the mayor or the administration. Instead, this is really supporting the call for us as a city to look at ourselves and reflect on how we got here. Too many of our city departments do not reflect the diversity, be it gender, be it race, of Boston. And that's not the fault of any particular individual. This is a matter of systemic bias that generations have built up on, and as an administration takes -- comes into power, it is not enough to simply look at one specific incident, write one report, and then hope that somehow we're going to tackle systemic bias. I don't need to repeat my comments and my criticisms of the recent report about the Boston Fire Department. In short, I found it very lacking. But I do want to say that this is an opportunity to say that when we do call for an independent investigation, the city council or the mayor, it should mean something. It should mean we're going to look, take a hard look in the mirror, and figure out what happened and why we're here. This commission's job would be to do just that. An independent commission that has funding from the City of Boston, that city counselors, the mayor, all appoint individuals to, to make sure when we're looking at systemic bias, we're doing it in a holistic way, with no pressure, with no sense, no political need or want, but literally just saying, how did we get here? How do we get to 15 women out of 1,500 firefighters? And how do we get out of that? Now, the commission may not have the expertise necessarily to always look at those issues, so I would encourage that the commission we established have the right to RFP, or put out proposals to allow for nonprofits or experts in these areas to come to the table and write those reports and do that analysis. That did not happen with this report. We picked someone we already work with. And I'd like to separate those boxes. Attorneys that we have who are brilliant, who are defenders of the City of Boston, should do just that. Defend at all costs with whatever issues they have. That's what they're contracted to do, and that is fine. I have been that kind of attorney. I have worked defending corporations and businesses and making sure that they are not overly burdened by discrimination cases. I have done that, and I've had that mindset. I don't oppose it. But I do not think then you pull from that same bucket of attorneys to then turn around and say, take a neutral understanding of the very department that you are currently defending in court, which is what we did. Instead, I say, establish a commission that will put out those RFPs that allow for folks who are not currently defending the City of Boston, or do not have a contract to do so, to compete to do that kind of analysis. They would put out the RFPs. They would ask for the reports. And then, when those reports come in, such as the recent one that has 21 recommendations, they'd monitor how those recommendations are being implemented. That, or we can have a hearing every six months in the City of Boston to look at those recommendations and say what's going on with all 21 of them. I'd rather give it to a commission whose job is to look at that. Say, there's been a call for a culture shift, so this commission will be looking at how that shifted, or how that culture is shifting or not, what resources. And would name names. Who's in the way of this culture shift? Start to hold people accountable. But this is not going to replace the MCAD. It is not intended to be an mediation component between two individual employees. This will not be something that, if I have an issue with a colleague, I'm going to run to this commission to have a report done about what this colleague is doing. That's what we have HR for. That's what we have MCAD for, those individual concerns. This is when you've had 15 to 20 individual concerns, potentially sexual assault, over decades, and we find ourselves still in the situation saying, how did we get here? This commission's job is to figure out how we got here and how we get out of here, together as a city, for the better and for our future. So I hope our colleagues will join, my colleagues will join in, in saying, yes, we want that kind of independent analysis. We want that kind of check-in about what we do recommend. We want to be able to say, when we call for an independent investigation, and it would provide powers for the city council and the mayor to call for those investigations, that when we do that, and we're going to look in the mirror, we're going to be honest about what we see. That's all I'm asking. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Campbell.
Thank you, Counselor Siomo, and thank you, Counselor Edwards and Counselor Zachem, for the partnership, and particularly Counselor Zachem for your work on these issues as Chair of the Committee of Civil Rights, even before I joined the council. And I, you know, I think Counselor Edwards summed it up. You know, this is in response, not only to the recent report with respect to the firefighters in the Fire Department, the women firefighters in the Fire Department, but really looking at all of the reports that come out after the mayor, or even the council, or even when we do this together, call for an independent investigation. What happens to those reports? How do we hold folks accountable? And more importantly, when we call for these investigations, who's doing the investigation? What are the standards with respect to those investigations? Obviously, even in this last year, we had concerns coming out of Boston Water and Sewer. I have a lot of employees that work for that division, real concerns there regarding discrimination and bias. And we call for an investigation, and then we don't hear anything. And so this is about setting up a commission where we sort of take the politics out of it, take it out of the purview of the mayor's office and the council, put it in the hands of some professionals, those who are more neutral and objective, and say, hey, help us conduct these independent investigations, so that we don't continue to go back to these departments and have conversations with employees who are having a really tough time. Our employees aren't making this stuff up. These are real incidents that are happening to people. And let me tell you, our employees, and I think we all know this, are dedicated to the City of Boston. I often say, at least on the council side, they work really hard and they're underpaid. And so we have to do our best to take care of them. And this is an opportunity to not just talk about doing something with respect to discrimination, but actually taking action. I'm excited to work in partnership with each and every one of you on this. We also understand that we have to look into whether or not we have authority around the BPDA and the Sewer Commission, but we wanted to pull them in, given just incidents that have come up. And it was important to include everyone, and so we're open to suggestions and ideas. This is our starting point. It's in the form of an ordinance, so that people know that we're serious and that we actually want to do something. So I'm excited to work with each and every one of you on this pressing work. And again, thank Counselor Zachem and Counselor Edwards for your partnership.
Thank you. Counselor Zachem.
Thank you, Mr. Vice President. I want to thank our council president, our good colleague, the district counselor from East Boston, for their partnership and their leadership on this issue, particularly Counsel President Campbell. Your report that is in on the docket today is not all-encompassing, the issues we're talking about with this ordinance, but it is, it has some important data in there, and it shows us why this is necessary. Regardless of the best intentions from anyone in this building or outside of this building, it is quite clear there's a problem. Having 1% of a fire department in the City of Boston to be women is unacceptable, regardless of the best intentions, regardless of the policies and investigations and agreements. We need to address some of these systemic issues, and that's why it's so important that this independent commission is established that can do this and that can dig deep and that can look at how to do, how we can do this. So we're not just going to issue one report, but we're going to strive for systemic change. It's a time not to be too, you know, cliche about it, for self-reflection for the City of Boston. And we included the city council under the jurisdiction of this commission. We are not exempting ourselves. We do not think we are perfect in this way by any means. We have work to do here as well, and that's what we need to start doing. It's great, and I truly believe that everyone who sits around this chamber, that the mayor Walsh, that his administration is working on these issues and is committed to these issues, but we need to take another step. We need to make sure we're doing everything we can, because in 2019, Boston can and should do better. So I am proud, as Chair of our Civil Rights Committee, to continue this work with the cosponsors, and hopefully with all of you, our colleagues, and with Mayor Walsh and his administration, because this is something we all agree on. We have shared goals on this, and we can and must achieve them. We have shared goals on this, and we can and must achieve them. Thank you.
Thank you. Please put, sorry. Please add Counselor Wu, Counselor O'Malley, Counselor Janey, Counselor Garrison, Counselor Flynn, Counselor Flaherty, Counselor Asabi George. And please put 0188 in the Committee of Government Operations.
Docket number 0190, oops, I'm sorry, 0189. Counselor Asabi George offers the following order for hearing regarding the governance structure of the Boston School Committee.
Counselor Asabi George, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. This is the first of many important refiles today. As Chair of the Committee on Education, I held a hearing to explore all possible governing structures for the Boston School Committee last December. The Boston School Committee is a direct opportunity for students, families, and advocates to address the education policy decisions being made for their children, for our children. We know at the very least, and in the most immediate time, we need to improve communication, the application for appointment, and the process of the citizens' nomination panel. The rest continues to be a part of our work ahead. To make any impactful change, there needs to be multiple thoughtful public opportunities for input. I look forward to having another robust conversation in this new year with students, families, and advocates, as well as my colleagues in the administration. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Asabi George. Anyone else looking to speak on this matter or add their name? Madam Clerk, if you could add Counselor Edwards, Counselor Janey, Counselor Garrison, Counselor O'Malley, Counselor Wu, as well as the Chair. Docket 0189 will be assigned to the Committee on Education.
Thank you. Docket number 0190. Counsel McCarthy and Janey offer the following order for hearing to examine and discuss best equity practices in cities' marijuana licensing process and potential for a social equity program.
Counselor Janey, you have the floor.
Thank you so much, Madam President. I first just want to open up by extending my gratitude to Congresswoman Presley and Counsel McCarthy, who had to step away. They originally filed this last year. I had a hearing December 4th on this issue. And there's so much more work to be done to ensure that there is equity as this industry emerges that I thought it was important to introduce this again. So, I'm now a sponsor on this docket, and I'm excited to engage with folks, with stakeholders, with potential entrepreneurs who want to ensure the same, that there is in fact equity. We already know through the war on drugs how that has impacted communities of color, poor communities. And now with this emerging industry, there is an opportunity to not only build wealth, but really close the wealth gap in Boston, if we do this right. And we're not here, again, to debate whether or not we want dispensaries or whether we don't want dispensaries. That was decided by the voters back in 2016. The question now is, how do we roll this out? How do we do so in an equitable way? And who will be able to benefit from this when it is rolled out through our city? What we found at the hearing that I held just a month ago was that there is a lot more work to be done. For example, the city's application process, we learned at that time, was not even asking the question around economic empowerment or equity. And that's an easy fix that I believe has been resolved. We also learned that there will be a minimum of 52 establishments throughout the city. So, we will have these all over the, you know, I shouldn't say "all over the place." We're going to have them throughout the city. And again, we need to make sure that, yes, our residents are engaged in this process, but we also don't want to shut the door on applicants who are equity applicants or economic empowerment applicants. What I'm going to do through this refile is, and through my committee, through the Committee of Small Business and Consumer Affairs, continue to engage with stakeholders, convene stakeholders, so that we can continue to identify ways that we can move forward to ensure that there is equity as this industry unfolds in the city of Boston. So, I look forward to engaging all of you in this work. We need to, there's a lot that we need to do. What I know and understand is if we do nothing, that we continue to perpetuate the income divide and the wealth gap within the city. We have to be intentional if we want to ensure that there's equity. And so, I look forward to engaging all of you and the stakeholders who came to the hearing, which was packed, so that we can continue to work on some language and on a program for Boston. So, thank you so much.
Thank you, Counselor Janey. Anyone else looking to speak on this matter or add their name? Madam Clerk, if you could add Counselor Edwards, Counselor Asabi George, Counselor Flynn, Counselor O'Malley, Counselor Wu, Counselor Zachem, as well as the Chair. Docket 0190 will be assigned to the Committee on Small Business and Consumer Affairs.
Docket number 0191. Counsel Flynn offered the following order for hearing regarding city regulations for the proximity of certain businesses to daycare centers, after-school, and summer programs, and requiring certain businesses to be situated as to not impair traffic and public pedestrian safety.
Counsel Flynn, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. I believe the city is doing its best to safely implement both medicinal and recreational cannabis. Amendment 432 of the zoning code establishes cannabis facilities as forbidden use in residential districts. It also requires that cannabis establishments be separated by a half mile. Additionally, this amendment establishes that cannabis businesses be situated 500 feet from K through A schools. Amendment 432 has good intentions, and I commend the mayor and members of BPDA for establishing these rules. This hearing order calls for the council to investigate separating cannabis establishment from additional places where many minors may gather. This includes playgrounds and daycare or after-school programs. This is not intended to place unreasonable burdens on new businesses. The council is already investigating buffer zones for licensed rehabilitation facilities. As this emerging industry continues to change and evolve, we must review additional public safety steps and potential blind spots along the way. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Counsel Flynn. Counsel Flaherty, you have the floor. Anyone else looking to speak on this matter or add their name? Madam Clerk, if you could add Counselor Edwards, Counselor Asabi George, Counselor Flaherty, Counselor Garrison, Counselor O'Malley, Counselor Wu. Docket 0191 will be assigned to the Committee on Small Business and Consumer Affairs.
Docket number 0192. Counselor Asabi George offered the following order for hearing regarding the fiscal year 2019 Boston Public School transportation budget.
Counselor Asabi George, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. This is a refile for an update on the Boston Public Schools' transportation budget for fiscal year 2019 as we prepare for fiscal year 20 budget. Last year, I held a hearing on this topic with the purpose of this body being better prepared heading into the next budget cycle. BPS continues to have cost overruns year after year. Last year, we realized a mid-school year report that we were already over by $6 million in spending on BPS transportation. That's why it's so important to have this analysis done at this point in the school year so that we understand the true spending to date and how we can have a more accurate picture of the BPS transportation budget. And this work also gives us an opportunity, affords us an opportunity to correct or identify any missed opportunities for savings. I look forward to having this hearing. Look forward to it being placed in the Ways and Means Committee. This is a very budget-specific hearing. And I look forward to spending, understanding BPS's FY19 spending year-to-date in preparation for this next cycle. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Asabi George. Anyone else looking to speak on this matter or add their name? Madam Clerk, if you could add Counselor Edwards, Counselor Siomo, Counselor Janey, Counselor Flynn, Counselor Garrison, Counselor Flaherty, Counselor O'Malley, Counselor Wu, as well as the Chair. Docket 0192 will be assigned to the Committee on Ways and Means.
Docket number 0193. Counselors Flynn and Campbell offered the following order for hearing to discuss domestic violence and sexual assault in the city of Boston.
Counsel Flynn, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. This is a refile. Thank you, Madam President, and other colleagues for your leadership on this issue. I stand today to discuss a topic that is unfortunately still with us today in our society, the state of Massachusetts, our city, and that is domestic violence and sexual assault. As a former probation officer for 10 years, I work closely with victims and those that committed acts of domestic violence as well. We in the city of Boston take great pride in knowing that the nation often looks to us for guidance due to our progressive policies and outlook on so many different issues. However, according to Jane Doe, the Massachusetts Coalition Against Sexual Assault and Domestic Violence, I'm afraid that our communities are not immune to this behavior. According to data compiled by Jane Doe, the Massachusetts Department of Public Health and the 2010 National Intimate Partner Survey, statistics indicate that Massachusetts was on par with national averages. And I'll just highlight a couple of stats. Nearly 1 in 3 women, 1 in 5 men in Massachusetts have experienced rape, physical violence, and a stalking by an intimate partner. 11% of high school students, 6% of middle school students reported being hurt by a date sometime in their life. In addition, it was noted that these statistics may not account for immigrants, members of the LGBTQ community, or those who may be hesitant to contact law enforcement. I recognize, again, it's an uncomfortable issue to talk about. However, I believe we have a responsibility to seek ways to reduce domestic violence and increase reporting opportunities for all communities. It is imperative that we educate people from every neighborhood, provide a comforting and safe atmosphere for victims, and offer an outlet for those who may be hesitant to speak out. Several weeks ago, several, last month, actually, I visited Cafe Mariner in the South End, had an opportunity to talk to staff at this location and women that were victims of domestic violence. Additionally, Madam President, this is work that I would like to continue and look to build on from back when my mother, Kathy Flinner's First Lady, worked on this important issue as well. In the final analysis, I would like to have this conversation to make sure we are doing all we can as a city to increase awareness about domestic violence, sexual assault in our city. Make sure we're doing all we can to educate the public, that we're doing all we can to support victims and offer opportunities for reporting for all communities. And hopefully find ways to reduce and bring about an end to this criminal behavior. Thank you, Madam President.
No, thank you, Counsel Flynn, and thank you for the partnership. Again, it's a refile, but I look forward to continuing the conversations and, of course, defining in more clear terms how the city can step up to support these organizations that are doing incredible work. Madam Clerk, anyone else looking to speak on this matter? Madam Clerk, if you could add Counsel Siomo, Counsel Asabi George, Counselor Edwards, Counsel Flaherty, Counsel Garrison, Counsel Janey, Counsel O'Malley, Counsel Wu, as well as Counsel Zachem. Docket 0193 will be assigned to the Committee on Public Safety and Criminal Justice.
Docket number 0194. Counselors Asabi George and Janey offered the following order for hearing regarding an admissions policy and funding changes for Madison Park Technical Vocational High School and improving scholarships.
Counsel Asabi George, you have the floor.
Madam President, the docket should read, also Counsel Wu.
You want to suspend Rule 12? Any objections? Madam Clerk, if you could add Counsel Wu as a third cosponsor. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam President, and thank you, Clerk. I am looking forward to revisiting the conversation around Madison Park Technical Vocational High School along with my colleagues, Counsel Janey and Counsel Wu. Madison Park will be another priority for me during the FY20 budget cycle. Last year, we held multiple meetings and discussions providing feedback from students, faculty, advocates, union reps, and more. Through the recommendations resulting from those conversations, we are narrowing our focus to tackle these main issues, the admissions policy, increasing funding, and partnerships. There is certainly more than just these three issues, but these are the areas where we can make a great impact quickly. I think that although this is a refile, it's important to note that it's a refile with a much clearer focus about the work ahead in the coming months and the rest of this year. I hope that over the course of the next few months and this year, along with your support, we will make real progress in the work that needs to happen and the support that needs to happen for what is already happening at Madison Park Technical Vocational High School for both the students, for the school, community members, the faculty, but also for the eventual employers of these students, both the workplace, both college and career readiness, all of that, what comes next for our kids. I thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Counsel Asabi George. Counsel Janey, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President, and I want to thank cosponsors, Counsel Asabi George and Counsel Wu, for their partnership. We spent much of last year, most of last year, working on this very important issue, really trying to highlight and elevate Madison, engage various stakeholders through school visits, through policy briefings, through the hearing that we had, talking with different partners. Very important work. We heard throughout that some concrete ways that we can move forward. So, I'm excited to have the conversation around admissions policy, around how Madison is funded. It's one of the many high schools that are in my district. It certainly plays a very important role in our portfolio of schools, and we need to make sure that they are being supported. I've already talked about, you know, how, you know, so many students are being locked out of the building boom that we see. And I'm glad to see that there are more and more partnerships with different unions and construction companies. But it's not just about the building trades. There are other trades. This is a school that is teaching our young people to be entrepreneurs. So, it really plays a very important role. And I'm excited to embark on this continued work with my colleagues for this year and want to make sure that we're doing all that we can to support the students and the educators and the whole school community at Madison. So, I'm grateful for your partnership as cosponsors and look forward to working with my colleagues and all of the stakeholders on this. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Janey. Counsel Wu, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. I rise to thank my cosponsors on this. After a year of all of our work and visits and sessions, I am more convinced than ever that having a thriving and inclusive vocational technical pipeline is the way to be addressing income inequality. It is the fastest way for the city to be immediately providing stability for our young people. And it is something that we've heard universal support from, of course, from the students and the families and the Madison Park community and the alumni who are ready to go and eager to see these changes implemented. But from the business community, who see this as critical to their workforce development pipelines and their future employees. We hear this from even higher education, where many of the very, very successful Voc Tech high schools across the state are sending kids, not just directly into the trades, tech high schools across the state are sending kids, not just directly into the trades, as is kind of the traditional stereotype, but in addition, training them for these technical jobs that are, you know, where people will still be the, not necessarily doing the actions of building and compiling and things that were soon automation takeover, but we always need smart, informed people to be managing the software, the technology, and that's a place, particularly within our hospital industry, particularly with retail services and with the need for more and more technology, that our students will continue to have jobs. The jobs will be here, they're already here, they're waiting, and it's just about bringing all these pieces together, unlocking through the admissions policy, through funding, through the most up-to-date equipment and partnerships, those connections, so that we can immediately start taking advantage of that. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Counselor Wu. Counselor Flaherty, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. Obviously, that was very well stated by our colleague, our lodge colleague, Counselor Wu, and it's interesting, so I recommend and refer to a lot of men and women across the city to the building trades, as I'm sure a lot of you have, and it's interesting and exciting to sort of take a look back as to, you know, when they first came to you asking for advocacy, and then where they are now, and whether that's a two-year, five-year, seven-year, 10-year, and it's amazing to see. So Counselor Wu really just nailed it in terms of talking about, you know, closing the income gap there, and it's interesting to see where these kids are buying homes, you know, what types of cars and trucks they're driving, where they're sending their kids to school, so I concur and would like to add my name at it. I think that this is a huge vehicle for us, and all of us individually, if we can continue to advocate for men and women from our neighborhoods and from our city to get into the building trades, there's a tremendous pathway there for them and for them to have a successful career, not only just within that trade as they're continuing to learn that skill, but many of them sort of siphon off and start their own businesses, start their own plumbing companies, start their own electrical companies, and that's always really exciting to see. So I'm proud to have played a role in some sense when you see these folks and you see a van driving by with their name on the side of it, knowing that 10 years ago, they came into your office looking to have some advocacy for a particular trade, so I think this is a tremendous opportunity for our city, and if you take a look at the skyline or sit out in front of 10-10 MS Ave, the permits just continue to keep coming in, the trucks, the cranes, the construction projects continue to happen in our city, and there's a great vehicle to have a bona fide, state-of-the-art trade school that's well-equipped to train these individuals to move on to gain a great career and to be successful. So, thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Counselor Flaherty. Counselor Flynn, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. I had the opportunity to attend a technical high school not far from here, Don Bosco Technical High School, and that high school provided subjects similar to the vocational program: computer science, woodworking, carpentry, electronics, electricity. And my classmates now are in the building trades, they're doing well, but it's because that great training and education they received at Don Bosco High School. I think Madison Park is making progress, and I think I'd love to see Madison Park partner up with some of these great businesses here in Boston, whether in the South Boston waterfront or in downtown, in training our young students on where are the jobs, making sure that they're able to get a good education, good training, and then get a good job at one of these companies. I'm also proud of the great progress the building trades have made over the last years in encouraging and recruiting communities of color and women into the building trades, and would like to add my name onto this, and just proud that this is a major issue that our colleagues are focused on. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Counselor Flynn. Madam Clerk, if you could add Counselor Flaherty, Counselor Flynn, Counselor Siomo, Counselor Garrison, Counselor O'Malley, Counselor Zachem, as well as the Chair. Docket 0194 will be assigned to the Committee on Education.
Docket number 0195. Counselors Flaherty and Flynn offered the following order for hearing regarding the South Boston Interim Planning Overlay District and Neighborhood-Wide Zoning.
Counselor Flaherty, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. My neighborhood and neighborhoods across the city continue to be intensely impacted by the increased development and revitalization efforts, and just this morning in Counselor O'Malley's district, attending an event, and that was sort of the number-one issue in terms of the impacts that development is having in that part of our city. While the new zoning schemes have been effective in many ways, there still are existing deficiencies in those schemes, particularly pertaining to minimum lot size, something that we don't have in my neighborhood, that may allow for development that could negatively impact the neighborhood character and quality of life for local residents. So I look forward to having an expedited hearing. This is a refiled matter. I know our colleague, Denise Boston, has been grappling with these issues, and we've shared some information with her with respect to the interim planning overlay district, otherwise known as an IPod, and so this is an opportunity for us to talk about the IPod that's in my neighborhood in South Boston, along with our district colleague, Counselor Flynn, but also an opportunity for particularly our district colleagues to learn a little bit more about what the IPod does, how effective it can be with respect to managing that growth and development that's occurring throughout all of our neighborhoods, and there may be some deficiencies in some of the zoning schemes within your respective communities. I know there was one in ours where they were literally, you know, prospectors were just coming in buying, you know, one and two-family homes, leveling those homes that were on beautiful lots, and then coming back with proposals for six, nine, 12 units. Accessive, absurd, and, you know, my grandmother had an expression, pigs get fed, hogs get slaughtered. That's exactly what was going on. When you're talking about knocking down single-family, two-family homes, replacing with 10, 12, that's over the top, greedy, so this IPod was a way to sort of stop that frenzy, if you will, and so very important piece to local zoning. Look forward to hearing the words of our district colleague, but ask my district colleagues to weigh in on this a little bit with respect to your districts, because it could be a very useful tool in allowing you to manage and allowing, manage expectations of community organizations, but particularly of butters, as to what they're going through as we continue to move our city forward. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Counselor Flaherty. Counselor Flynn, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President, and we also had great leadership from the South Boston elected officials that also continued to hear the same concerns that myself and Counselor Flaherty and the other at-large counselors here almost every day, but we want to make sure that we can make any changes that are appropriate, but make sure that South Boston and all communities across the city is a place for working-class people and families and for, it's always a place for the elderly and the disabled and the poor as well. I think we need to make some major changes to make sure that our city becomes a strong place for a growing middle class, and obviously, the federal government has gotten out of building public housing, so it's up to the city government and state government to pick up that role, but also to build housing for middle-class families across the city. But I want to say thank you to my colleague, Counselor Flaherty, in working on this issue for many years. It's an important issue in South Boston. We want to try to make, take any steps necessary to make sure that South Boston remains a community of families, of the elderly, of the poor, and working-class people as well. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Counselor Flynn. And anyone else looking to speak on this matter or add their name? Madam Clerk, if you could add Counselor Edwards, Counselor Sabi George, Counselor Garrison, Counselor Wu, Counselor Zachem. Docket 0195 will be assigned to the Committee on Planning, Development, and Transportation.
Docket number 0196. Counselor Sabi George offered the following order for hearing to analyze the safety and security measures taken to protect school environments from threatening situations.
Counselor Sabi George, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. I'd like to move for substitution of new language. All, everyone should have it on their, on their desk.
Any objections to the substitution? Madam Clerk, if you could just reflect that, it's a new language, a substitution for the-
Just a few edits.
The old language. Thank you, Counselor Sabi George.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam President. As a city prioritizing the safety of all students should always be the number-one goal. The topic of school safety is not new to the council floor. We discuss it in many forms and meetings and through our budget hearings. Violence in Boston's discussions in every moment we can with the Boston Public Schools in front of us, but we need to do more. Our students, families, and their educators continue to be concerned and have every reason to be. The crisis of violence in and around our schools has devastating effects on our school communities, families, and the entire city altogether. At the very least, we have to make sure every school has improved safety practices and infrastructure such as appropriate door locks for classrooms, monitored entryways, school-wide active shooter trainings, and other preventative measures against violent attacks. A safe school environment also includes actively in addressing and preventing physical, verbal, and cyber bullying, creating a safer route to school, and ensuring school environments are clear of any active drug use and used needles. As students deserve a safe learning environment where they can thrive academically without fear, I look forward to this work ahead. I would also like to note that we are approaching in the next few weeks or a month from today, or a month, February 14th, the one-year anniversary of the Parkland shooting, and it is also not lost on me, since that, in this 11 months or so, we've had about 100 other school shootings or active shooters, shooting incidences at schools across the United States. And we continue to have work to do, and as unlikely as an active shooter case might be in any one of our schools, unfortunately, after every incident, it statistically becomes more likely, and we need to make sure that we are prepared, that we are prepared for what's happening in our schools, what's happening around our schools, what's happening to and with our students, and how do we better protect them, give them the skills that they need to be, to protect themselves, both from physical harm but also from emotional harm, and what can we do for our teachers and our faculty to better protect their students. The Boston Public Schools has certainly made some gains over the last year in particular, and I look forward to hearing about those successes and those improvements, but we know that there is work to do, and so I look forward to the work that lies ahead, the unfortunate anniversary of Parkland in particular, but of any violent act that has happened in and around our schools or to our students. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Counselor Sabi George. At this time, Madam Clerk, if you could add, anyone looking to add their name? Madam Clerk, if you could add Counselor Siomo, Counselor Edwards, Counselor Flynn, Counselor Flaherty, Counselor Garrison, Counselor O'Malley, Counselor Wu, Counselor Zachem, as well as the Chair. Docket 0196 will be assigned to the Committee on Education.
Docket number 0197. Counselors Sabi George offer the following order for hearing regarding the implementation of policy requiring all Boston Public Schools to have full-time nurse and social, emotional support specialists.
Counselor Sabi George, you have the floor.
Thank you again, Madam President. Since my first year in office, I have advocated alongside our former colleague, Congresswoman Ayanna Pressley, for a full-time nurse in every single school. Our students need to be supported for their social, emotional, behavioral, physical, and mental well-being. We need to address issues affecting students such as trauma, depression, anxiety, and bullying. We also need to make sure that we have nurses on hands to take care of the scratches and the scrapes and the unfortunate belly bug. During the last budget cycle, BPS invested $2.3 million into additional nurses, psychologists, and social workers, but there is still an inadequate number of social and emotional support specialists. They need to be in every school, every day, to support all of our students. I'm looking forward to working with the interim superintendent, the administration, and our colleagues to implement a policy requiring all Boston Public Schools to have at least one full-time nurse and social and emotional support specialist. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Sabi George. Madam Clerk, if you could add Counselor Flaherty, Counsel, oh, Counselor Flynn, Counselor Garrison, Counselor Janey, Counselor O'Malley, Counselor Wu, Counselor Zachem, as well as Counselor Edwards, as well as the Chair. Counselor Flynn, you would like to speak? Counselor Flynn, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. I want to thank Counselor Sabi George for her leadership on this important issue. One issue I would like to bring to the table, or two issues maybe, is if we can also consider asking or see if we can get funding for family counseling, whether it's the parents that come to the school af, after school, so that they can also get counseling if they do need it as well. And the other, the other point I would like to make is if we could work together to make sure that our, our mental health counselors are also fluent in certain languages other than English as well, just to make sure that we have counselors in, that speak Vietnamese or Cantonese or Spanish, and just so that we partner up those mental health counselors with the right school at the right time. At times, we do have counselors that would bring a counselor into a school that does not speak the language of some of the students, so that's an issue I'd like to hopefully work with the counselor and with the mayor's office on as well. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Counselor Flynn. Just going to go through again those folks who wanted to add their name, because I'm not sure the clerk got them all. So Madam Clerk, if you could add Counselor Edwards, Counselor Flaherty, Counselor Flynn, Counselor Garrison, Counselor Janey, Counselor O'Malley, Counselor Wu, Counselor Zachem, as well as the Chair. Docket 0197 will be assigned to the Committee on Education.
Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you.
Docket number 0198. Counselor Sabi George offered the following order for hearing regarding the maximum age assignment policy in the Boston Public Schools.
Counselor Sabi George, you have the floor.
Thank you again, Madam President. Last October, I hosted a hearing in partnership with you, Council President Campbell and Counselor Janey, regarding off-track youth. During this hearing, we heard from students attending BADA, a school that specializes in older youth, expressing their fear of getting pushed out mid-year because of their age. Boston Public Schools recently decided to enforce a decade-old policy that automatically kicks out students from the school system as soon as they turn 22 years old, without letting them compete, complete the year. We welcome these students to our schools and then boot them out when they're so close to graduation. This is wrong. Many of these students are immigrants, English-language learners, and some may be students with disabilities. These students are working hard toward their high school diploma and deserve the same support as any other student. This includes social, emotional support, the right to finish the school year and graduate, and receive complete, receive complete and thorough transitional assistance. I look forward to working with families, the interim superintendent, the administration, and our colleagues to review this maximum age policy. Our students' future depend on it. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Sabi George. Counselor Janey, you have the floor.
Thank you so much, Madam President, and I just want to applaud the sponsor of this. I think it's very important to look at this. You know, we heard clearly from BADA students and from staff about how this was impacting students there. I'm sure it's an issue at some of our other high schools. I want to just highlight for all of us that many of the students that we're talking about are late-arriving immigrant students who speak languages other than English and need extra time and support to complete their studies, and so I think this is a very timely and important hearing order. I look forward to having the conversation with all of you. Please add my name. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Janey. Madam Clerk, if you could add Counselor Janey. Counselor Flynn, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. I'd like to respectfully ask if you could add my name as well. I do support this proposal. I think it's critical. One of the issues I tried to highlight on my first year is language access for everyone that speaks a language other than English, but I think keeping these schools open another few years for older students, especially our immigrant community, people that may not speak English, let's give them an opportunity to be successful here in Boston, and they will be successful if they're able to continue their education, their training, so that they can get a job. We're not helping them if we're kicking them out of a school before they graduate. It makes them less desirable, unfortunately, when they're looking for a job. So let's give these immigrants, people that may not speak English, people that may have disabilities, give them an opportunity to benefit in this booming Boston economy. It's for everybody, including the immigrant community, including the people that may not speak English, and for the disabled as well. They deserve a chance at the American dream. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Counselor Flynn. Madam Clerk, if you could add Counselor Flynn's name. Anyone else looking to speak? If you could also add Counselor O'Malley, Counselor Wu, Counselor Zachem, as well as the Chair, and, as well as Counselor Siomo, and thank you, Counselor Sabi George. Docket 0198 will be assigned to the Committee on Education.
Docket number 0199. Counselor Sabi George offered the following order for hearing regarding independent education plans in Boston Public Schools.
Counselor Sabi George, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. Supporting our students continues to be a priority of mine, as I know it's a priority of all of ours. Every student should be able to succeed academically, socially, emotionally, and physically. There are approximately 11,000 students in the Boston Public Schools that have a disability and require specific services based on their needs. Students and families go through a demanding and intimidating process for an IEP. This is one area that I hear the most frustration about when I talk to families and parents. Families feel unsupported, overwhelmed, and incapable of advocating for their children. An IEP identifies the needs, goals, and services for a particular student. Families need to know that BPS can fulfill their child's needs. BPS has an obligation of providing proper transportation, a school nurse, counseling, a plan for transition, and more. It is critical that we are breaking down barriers and making services accessible while assisting students in transition. I look forward to working with families, the interim superintendent, and the administration to review the IEP process and policy, and to especially support our students aged 14 to 22 accessing transition services as they transition out of the Boston Public Schools to college and work and other programs. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Sabi George. Counselor Janey, you have the floor.
Thank you so much, Madam President, and once again, I'd like to thank the sponsor of this important hearing order. I know firsthand from my, one, my work at Mass Advocates for Children, which does a lot of work supporting families around navigating this process. It's a very complicated process. I know firsthand from my own experience. My grandson has an IEP, and I know how difficult it can be for parents to really understand much of the language that's being presented. Much of it is kind of this legal lawyer- Much of it is kind of this legal lawyer talk, much of it is medical language, and they need a lot of support. I look forward to this hearing. I think it's very important. And I ask that we also look at gaps. What I know from my work is that when we look at who needs special education, oftentimes there are Black and Brown students who are often substantially separate programs, and we have other students who are being included in the classroom. And so I think it's important that we always use our equity lens as we're thinking about not only how do we support all students with special needs, but making sure that we're not perpetuating gaps and that we're looking at implicit and explicit racial bias as we approach this. So thank you again, Counselors Sabi George, and look forward to working with all of you as well as the advocates in the community. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Janey. I'm assuming you want to add your name as well?
Oh, yes, please add my name. Thank you.
Madam Clerk, if you could add Counsel Janey. Counsel Flaherty, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. Please add my name. Having been through this years ago, the process is an absolute nightmare, and through the chair would suggest, through the maker, that when we have the hearing, and hopefully it'll be an expedited hearing, that there's a defined start and a defined finish to the process. Too often, folks that are going through the IEP process, it just languishes, and then you throw in school vacations, and you throw in the summer break, and then you finally have sort of a diagnosis or a plan, if you will, and then we're uprooting a child out of a classroom in a school in a different neighborhood. It's, it's just, it's just been a recipe for disaster. So I look forward to having my name added in for an expedited hearing to try to bring some sense to this IEP process. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Flaherty. Madam Clerk, if you could add Counsel Flaherty? Counsel O'Malley, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. I rise to thank my colleague and friend, the at-large Counsel from Dorchester, for her leadership on this and so many school issues. And just going over, you know, the robust portfolio that was offered today, I think they all tie nicely particularly into IEPs. As we talk about school safety, as we talk about nurse and support services, we talk about transportation, we talk about governance of the school committees, we talk about Build BPS, these are all issues that we need to be having a conversation concurrently with IEPs and support for our students. And the only thing that I would add to this is something that I've noticed in my eight budgets now on this body, is that we are seeing an increase in our out-of-district placement for services, which I know is a last resort. That is unacceptable to me. We ought to be able to service every Boston Public School student, not only because it's the right thing to do, but we are paying cumulatively millions of dollars for out-of-district placements. So the more that we can identify what we need and how we can address it, we can also service kids while saving taxpayers money. It doesn't get any better than that. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Counsel O'Malley. Madam Clerk, if you could add Counsel O'Malley's name? Counsel Flynn, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. Please add my name as well, Madam President, and I speak, I rise to speak on this important issue. Education for everybody is critical, especially those in the disability community. I also, what one of my colleagues mentioned, have had several family relatives that participate in the special education program. I'd also like to thank Boston Public Schools for doing the best they can on this issue. And also, maybe it's up to us during the budget process to advocate more strongly for special education programs, but also, Madam President, we see a booming Boston economy. Most, a lot of it is happening in my district. Maybe it's time for some of these major developers to start playing a better role or a financial role in our public education system, helping our special-needs students, helping our athletic programs, helping our mental health counselors as well. So I just want to say thank you to my colleagues that have worked on this issue for many years. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Counsel Flynn. Madam Clerk, if you could add Counsel Flynn's name? Anyone else want to add? Madam Clerk, if you could also add Counsel Siomo, Counsel Edwards, Counsel Garrison, Counsel Wu, Counsel Zachem, as well as the Chair. Docket 0199 will be assigned to the Committee on Education. Oh, did you want to speak on this docket?
Madam President, just move for reconsideration on docket 0190 if there's no objections.
Any objections to reconsidering docket 0190? Maybe just bring it back up? Nope, Counsel Flaherty?
Madam President, may I have my name added in through the chair? Just suggest to colleagues, makers, and co-signers that there's obviously a movement afoot at the federal government level, probably through the Surgeon General, to reclassify marijuana. And I think if that does, then I think there's going to be sort of an end to this gold rush, if you will. And I just throw that up as a caution flag. You get people that are cashing in their life savings, sort of repositioning their assets, you have them drawing equity on their existing properties, all to get into the cannabis game. You got people that have their own professions in real estate and construction and the law, all sort of giving up their, sort of their existing practice and trade to dive into the feeding frenzy of the gold rush of marijuana. And also I'm saying is that at some point, the federal government's going to relook at this thing, and I think the minute they reclassify it, I think we'll be able to pick this up at CVS and Walgreens and Rite Aid and sort of the Führer, and that steam will just come right out of that kettle. And so for those that are sort of banking on this is the next frontier, and are ready to cash in their life savings to take it to the next level, I just sort of throw caution into the wind as we start to go down that road around where we're citing them and who should be participating. I just don't want to see people lose their shirt, quite frankly, on cannabis when there's so many moving parts here. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Counsel Flaherty. Madam Clerk, if you could add Counsel Flaherty's name to docket 0190. At this time, I'm going to move on to late files, and I'm informed by the clerk that we have three late-file matters, which in the absence of objection will be added to today's agenda. Hearing and seeing no objection, the three late-file matters will be added. Just for, so my colleagues are aware, one is a letter from one of our colleagues who was not present today, and then two are personnel orders. That's why you don't have copies of them. Madam Clerk, if you could read the first late-file matter into the record?
From the Office of Frank Baker, Boston City Council, District 3, January 15, 2019. Dear President Campbell, please be advised that I will not be in attendance at the Boston City Council meeting on Wednesday, January 16, 2019. Please ask that the city clerk read this matter into public record. Thank you sincerely, Frank Baker, Boston City Council, District 3.
The first late-file matter will be placed on file.
In City, in City Council, January 16, 2019, Counsel Campbell for Counselors Sabi George.
Counselors Sabi George seeks suspension of the rules and passage of the second late-file matter. All those in favor say aye. Any opposed, say nay. The ayes have it, the second late-file matter has been passed.
In City Council, January 16, 2019, Counsel Campbell for Counselors Sabi George.
Counselors Sabi George seeks suspension of the rules and passage of the third late-file matter. All those in favor say aye. Any opposed, say nay. The ayes have it, the third late-file matter has been passed. Moving on to the green sheets. Anybody wishing to remove a matter from the green sheets may do so now. Moving right along, I am, okay, I'm informed by the clerk that there are zero late-file matters for the consent agenda. The Chair moves for adoption of the consent agenda at this time. All those in favor say aye. Any opposed, say nay. The ayes have it, the consent agenda has been adopted. Counsel Wu, for what purpose do you rise?
Unanimous consent to make a statement about giving an update on a previous home rule petition?
On a previous?
Home rule, not today, just in general, anyway, update.
Go ahead.
In October of 2017, the council unanimously passed a home rule petition on the right to charge for electric vehicles, basically ensuring that condo associations wouldn't be able to prohibit the installation of electric vehicle charging stations, but they could add reasonable regulations on where it could go on common areas. We were having a problem about residents particularly who lived in two- and three-family homes where there were condos, and so interpersonal conflicts or for whatever reasons, they couldn't agree on someone being able to add a charger on the shared driveway or in the shared garage. Other states have had this model where there's a right to charge, where you have to let them add this public utility, but you can talk about where, who pays for it, et cetera. Anyway, the council passed the home rule petition, went up to the State House, and I'm very excited to report that it was signed into law two weeks ago. I never thought this would happen in terms of something moving through on Beacon Hill, but thanks to, it is entirely thanks to the efforts of our sponsors at the state level, Rep. Adrian Madro and Senator Joe Boncorie. So if you see them, tell them thank you as well, and this is now law. And any of your residents who have questions about this, direct them to ISD, we'll be implementing it. Thank you.
Thank you. Counsel Edwards, for what purpose do you rise?
Unanimous consent to make two brief statements.
Any objections? Counsel Edwards?
The first statement, I wanted to acknowledge the passing of a constituent sister, Father Mahoney in Charlestown is, I think is the definition of Charlestown. He's probably baptized most of the townies, and he's a firefighter, actually, and was injured in fighting fires and has delivered rites, last rites, to folks in the fire. So his sister has passed away, and I wanted to, we've sent him, of course, an acknowledgement, but I just wanted to also say that to you. Many of you knew him before I ever did, known him for decades. He's been there in the fight for the town, been there in some of the hardest moments of strife and conversation, and of course, the passing of a loved one is something that also is something we want to let him know, we're here for him, and that if he needs to reach out, if he needs anything from the council, we're there for him. Knowing Father Mahoney, he won't, not because he doesn't want to, but because he's that kind of person. He's there for everybody else, but we have to, I wanted to say it publicly, we're here for you, Father, and we understand that this is, this would be a difficult time. So I wanted to say that very briefly. And then also, just to acknowledge that this is, we're celebrating the 100-year anniversary of the great molasses flood that happened in the North End. It's a sad tragedy, actually. 21 people died, were killed, 150 were injured. Six of those folks were city workers. And it's a real, it's a real tragedy in that there was lack of regulation and lack of corporate responsibility to a neighborhood, and as a result, I think it was almost 13 tons of molasses moved at 35 miles an hour where the Langone Park is right now. It, those tanks broke, broke open, and it just flooded right into the community. And so we want to acknowledge the passing of those individuals, but also that this was a result of really getting to zoning regulation and safety. And I've heard tale that it might have been one of the first-class action lawsuits against a huge corporation. So as a result of that mass tragedy, a lot of things have changed in our culture, but I did want to acknowledge that. It's in Langone Park, in my district in the North End, and that unfortunately, there are people who had to die for us to be a better city, but I didn't want them, this 100th anniversary, to go without our recognition.
Thank you, Counsel Edwards. Counsel Sabi George, for what purpose do you rise?
Thank you, Madam President. I request unanimous consent to make a statement.
Any objection?
Thank you all.
Go right ahead.
I just want to use this opportunity to recognize that there is a strike happening in Los Angeles. It is day three of the teacher's strike, and when I sort of was reading about it, sort of heard it in the background, and then did a little bit of reading and realized the, what was actually happening in Los Angeles. This is day three of their, of their strike. Los Angeles School District is the second-largest school district in the United States. They have 640,000 students. They have 900 or so schools and about 35,000 teachers. This strike is not about money, it's about class size. For example, high schools have a class limit of 42. I taught with 31 kids, and the ideal amount is really about 25 or 26. The elementary school class size limit is 36. When you think about in Boston, our numbers are so much lower than that. They rank, for student-teacher ratio, they rank 48 out of 50 states. It's also about nurses and support staff. We talked today about the importance of having full-time nurses in all of our buildings to have the appropriate behavioral health, mental health support professionals in our buildings. They're looking for that in Los Angeles. They're also looking for a reinvestment in school safety, something that every school district across the United States is talking about, something that's so important when we think about the safety and well-being of our students, and certainly of our staff and our faculty in all of our schools. This strike is about the very things that we worry about here in the city of Boston and the Boston Public Schools. So I just wanted to lend my voice, lend my support for the teachers in Los Angeles, for the 35,000 members or so, but really for the 640,000 kids that are part of that school district. Thank you for the opportunity to speak to this.
Thank you, Counsel Sabi George. Counsel O'Malley, for what purpose do you rise?
Ask unanimous consent to make a brief statement.
Any objections?
I promise this will be brief, Madam President. I just also wanted to acknowledge, yesterday would have been the 90th birthday of Reverend Dr. Martin Luther King Jr., one of the most transformative figures in American history, someone who we will call an honorary Bostonian for his time spent at Boston University, where of course he met his incredible wife, and just wanted to acknowledge what would have been his 90th birthday and how different the world would have been had he been with us to celebrate it. So, thank you, Madam President.
No, thank you, and you took the words right out of my mouth, so thank you for doing that, and I hope everyone enjoys their Martin Luther King Day in the Day of Service. At this time, I ask all colleagues and guests to please rise as we adjourn today's meeting in memory of the following individuals. For Counsel Edwards, Mary Mahoney. For Counsel McCarthy, Antonio DiBacco. For Counsel O'Malley, Chuck McGowan. Helen Stamford. Elizabeth Toboe. For Counsel Janey, Edward Mowering. And Mildred Alexandrian, Washington. For Counselors Sabi George, Counsel Baker, and the Chair, Barbara Tribe. A moment of silence, please. Thank you. The Chair moves that when the council adjourns today, it does so in memory of the aforementioned individuals. We are scheduled to meet again today on Wednes, again, in this chamber at Boston City Hall on Wednesday, January 30 at noon. All those in favor of adjournment, say aye. Any opposed, say nay. The ayes have it, the council is adjourned. Just a quick reminder that we have a picture we want to take, so if everyone could...